Okay, good evening and welcome to the May 10, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda, we will have a moment of silence, public service announcements, action items, including consideration and possible action on water-saw connection fees, consideration and possible action on the annual town meeting warrant and special town meeting warrant, consideration and possible action on the appointment of the Sturbridge Town Council, appointment of Andrew Pelletier and Michael Julian as temporary building inspectors, old business, new business, Citizens Forum, and we do have a request for executive session. Okay, could we please have our moment of silence for all those affected by COVID and the people suffering in the Ukraine? Okay, thank you. Okay, public service announcements. Jamie, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Mary? Chase?
Nope.
You?
Oh, I do. Chase did a great job.
Well, probably watch.
You would have been very proud, is all I was saying.
Yeah, but I was busy, so. Okay, action items, consideration and possible action on water-saw connection fees. Shane and Butch?
Did you get a copy? Yeah, okay, good. Jamie's got it. I blew it up because it was hard to print out in eleven, eight and a half by eleven, so I blew it up to a...
Well, I printed it out in sections.
Yeah, well, I did that, too. And then today, I said, you know what? I'll try to, I'll just print out a big one.
So this is, this is good.
It's just luxury.
Hey, do you want to give a little explanation, Butch, please?
No, we just, we, I got all of Tygen-Barnes' information, put in with my information, and basically kind of averaged it out, try and bring us into closer to what the average is or the industry standards are for some of these fees, because we're very low on a lot of them, and we, our water and sewer, you know, we, obviously, our reserves are down, but we just wanted to catch up, and this might help us catch up a little bit. This is mostly for new construction. You wouldn't have, existing users won't be affected by this. It's just all of the, except maybe like hydrant fees. That would mostly be contractors. Illegal hydrant hookups, I mean, that's not an issue yet, but we just want to make sure in case we do catch that, because what happens, I've seen in other towns where they'll go on private property that has hydrants, and they'll tap in, because we can't really see them. So if we catch anybody, at least we'll be able to have some, some, something behind it. Backflow survey, that's, I guess the biggest one is probably the water connection fee industrial and the water connection fee normal. But we, let's see, water connection fees. If you look at the top, at 3,000, we're probably in the high side. 4,000 was the highest one we saw, but, actually, I'm sorry, 3,000 we got, so yeah, the 4,000 was the highest one we saw, so 2,500 would have been a sort of an average. That's fairly good. But I don't know how you guys feel about these. And then the sewer, the biggest jump would have been sewer connection fee, and that was due to, some of these, some of these were like 8,000, 10,000, but we're kind of in the middle, where we were only 1,200 before. And industrial, same thing, we're just bringing up the roughly work we're charging in other towns. And the rest of it's kind of self-explanatory. Matter if you guys want to vote these in or if you want to make adjustments. Like I said, this is mostly for new construction coming into town.
So 99% of these connection fees over the past five years are all new construction, all new buildings. So basically, they're buying into your infrastructure, and your rates have been, you know, crazy low for years. And like Butch said, you know, try, try to get some more money revenue brought up. Honestly, I think these are fair and way overdue, to be honest.
Yeah, I don't have trouble with most of them, but ones with the quite a bit of jump, the water connection and the sewer connection, I mean, I think we may be really low compared to other towns, but that's a heck of a jump from, on the sewer from 1,200 to 5,000, and on the water connection from $225 to 3,000, and then the industrial one, 325 to 7,000.
Well, we're certainly open to suggestions.
I guess, and just one way I try to explain it to people, and I explain it to people, take yourself for example, you've been a water and sewer customer for years, right? And every, every quarter, you get a bill. When you get that bill, you're not just paying for the water and sewer you use, you're also paying for the infrastructure upgrades, right? And you've been doing that for years, and a lot of customers have. When a new person comes in, they should be absorbing, you know, absorbing some of that cost also. And by not adjusting these fees, you're not really doing that. And I, that's one way I try to explain it to people.
Right, I don't mind adjusting it somewhat, but I mean, don't forget, if they're connecting, then their future in their bills, they'll be paying like we've been paying for 122 years.
Well, on the water end, you have to remember, too, that there's no betterment, no privilege fee, so they're, they're actually getting away with a, it's actually a good price, whereas at the sewer end, you are, if you are paying a betterment or, or a, what's the other one? I just said it.
Privilege fee, sewer privilege fee.
You're kind of getting hit with that for some of the infrastructure. With the water end, you're really not getting hit for any of it. Just, just a thought.
Hey, comments from the question?
Yeah, kind of a question comment. For the industrial, it wouldn't seem that $7,000 is that much money for industrial, for industrial set.
No, if you got like a Walmart or something coming in, or these big, big places up here that are coming in, that's, we feel that's, that's peanuts. That's not commercial, that's industrial.
Yeah, and I don't think that would, anybody would bat an eye at that, at least.
No.
So that one's a little easier.
I know, because everyone thinks industry has all the money.
No, but I mean, $7,000, you can sneeze and spend that industrially. I can just speak to my own practice. I turn around, I spend $7,000. I'm not a big employer, and I'm not making, involved in industrial production. So I think that's different.
I don't see it being a deterrent to anybody.
Yeah.
If you want to put a building where you want to put it, you're going to pay to hook up.
Yeah, that would be the issue.
And I mean, if they're going to dig a well, a well, $7,000, I mean...
Or a septic system's at least 30.
Right, so it's...
I think partly, you know, when Leslie came in here a couple of weeks ago and made the point that they paid a lot of money when sewage came down her street, and then now the people are signing up for $1,200, and they're, they're getting away with essentially...
It's not really getting away with, it's a whole other story. I mean, the people who were hooked up to the Hobbs Brook one, they paid nothing for theirs because...
So I guess the other way to look at it is, just from what I've seen, it's builders, right? It's guys building houses, and they're going to come in, and they're going to, they're going to build their houses, and they're going to make a bunch of money off that house. And if they got to pay a little bit more for water and sewer, they're just going to add it on and get their money back.
Yeah, they'll add on to the price they sell.
So, in my opinion, you should, you should adjust these, but again, that's, you know, your decision.
Mary?
Can you explain to me again why they weren't, are they not, the water is not paying for the infrastructure, and we did when we...
Well, we...
Not totally following?
Well, there's no betterment in town for water. If we extend the water line, I don't believe anybody pays a betterment or a, or a privilege fee. It's just the water line gets extended, where if the sewer line gets extended along your frontage, you pay a betterment, you pay so much per foot. I don't know why it's like that, but...
Yep.
As far as I know, that's the way.
But we didn't pay for the water extension either, the ones that are on town services.
No, we paid...
So that's why you're saying it's a wash of the water.
No, not like, not like the sewer. I mean, I paid...
The billing?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you when I was saying, you said that, look at it this way, we have to pay for the infrastructure, but the current people signing up don't, only on the sewer side.
Yes, because the sewer, they pay a privilege fee instead of the betterment. Whereas the water, at the water end of it, the lines go in, we don't, I don't believe we charge anything to the homeowners as we go by their property. We haven't extended a water line here in town for probably a long time, but it's, it's just, we, we pay for it.
Okay, so that argument that we paid for the infrastructure and they don't have to?
Right.
You're only talking about sewer?
Right.
Not water?
Right.
As a justification for the increase in the water?
A lot of times, what we do is if, if you want, like, I think in the case, we're talking Walmart or any of those places up there, if they want water, they have to pay for it. They want, if there are two lots up and they want town water for that lot, they have to pay for the, the line, not us.
I guess this is just an observation, and, you know, it seems that if we haven't kept up for a long time, we probably, and I know this is, you know, looking back, and that's not going to do us any good, but we probably should have been keeping up a little bit at a time over the years, so, you know, board or the, someone, I don't want to say drop the ball, but we really weren't attentive, because now it is a big increase, whereas if we would have stayed up to date a little bit more over the years and...
Maybe, yeah, maybe, but now we're, now we're looking at it, so...
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Chase?
Yeah, I, I mean, I kind of agree. We definitely have to go up. I, I think we're extremely low now. I guess the only one that I'm kind of, the only two that I'm questioning is the residential sewer connection, the residential water connection. I don't know if we want to play with those a little, or if we, if we want to roll with that.
I'm, I'm of two minds myself. I, I hear what, Mary, you're saying about the, the jump, and I hear what you're saying too, Chase, but you look at the other communities, we're really pretty far behind, and I guess that, I, I just, I guess it's the, because of all the other costs we have and frankly, inflation, I'm of, and because we're in the middle of a housing boom, like, I just don't think that these, on new construction, these numbers are really altering any bottom lines because they're within all points of negotiation and all, and so I don't see it deterring anybody or frustrating anybody, and I think it's just trying to be responsible maintenance, but I, but I don't disagree with you entirely either. I'm sort of thinking out loud.
I don't know. I'm just... Ian?
I mean, I, I tend to agree with Jamie that these numbers for an industrial project, when you look at the size of most projects and the budget, it's not even going to blink an eye at it, because it's built in, and there's, that's the fee, you have to pay it. So I think I tend to agree with the people who are experts on water and sewer.
Okay, how do you feel then about the residential water connection fee?
I mean, same thing, you know, the average house in Sturbridge that's getting built is going to be 375, 400 and up, so 3,000 is not really even going to...
And like Chase says, a well is how much put in?
Yeah.
That's if you can, if you can get the water.
Get the water, yeah.
Can you just explain the top chart to me a little bit better? Which ones are 3,000 of those towns? Spencer is 1,500.
For which, for which, for water? Spencer's 1,500. Lester's 3,500.
Okay.
Webster's 25, Auburn's 1,000, Southbridge is 2,000, Upton's 4,000.
They're kind of all over the place.
Yeah, they are, and it's kind of like that in the whole chart.
It seems like the ones with the cheaper connection fees tend to have a higher build rate, so you're, you're paying for it over time, or you're paying for it upfront?
Yeah.
More, more industries.
Right. Or the bigger towns, maybe, I don't know. Big Upton, I don't know how big Upton is, but they're up 4,000.
And also, it's putting the pressure on new construction and keeping it off of present residents. I think people have more money when they're building something, and I think that's a little more fair, because you're, when you're in the mortgage process or a building process, you have larger access to capital than when you're, you know, maybe month to month and you're, you know, on a controlled income or something, senior or something. So I, I tend to, like, I think Ian kind of swung me with the, you know, this is their job, so I tend to, something like this is too specific.
Well, it's the board's pleasure then. I, I still would be a little pleased if the residential water connection was a little bit lower.
What do you propose, Mary?
2,000.
And then, we maybe agree to revisit all of this in a, in, I don't know, what do we revisit this every year? Make it part of the annual?
Review.
Review of things that we revisit and say, you know, did it discourage building? Were we down on how many homes were built? And then we can, because I'd give you, you know, maybe next year, we look at it, if the feedback is bad on it, if builders are coming out and saying this is cost prohibitive or this is discouraging, then...
Yeah, no, there's nothing mad with reviewing.
Yeah.
Then you could go up in smaller increments if you decided to, $50 a year.
We're going to take a big jump, we're going to take a big jump this year to catch up.
None of us will be here.
I was ready to defer. I was ready to defer to both of you as well, although, you know...
I think the people that are going to complain are the builders.
Yeah.
I'm going to be the one that gets the calls, it's going to be the guys building the houses, and...
Yeah, but the thing is that, you know, it'll...
And I don't think you're going to get a lot of complaints.
Builders will just tack it on to the sale of the house, which is really not fair to the people buying the house either.
The only people, the only builders that will complain are builders that have never built in any other town. They strictly built in Sturbridge. They're going to say, oh, that's terrible, but if they've built in Webster or Lester or Dudley or anywhere else, they're going to say, they probably won't even notice.
I'm going to, no, I'm going to kind of contradict my earlier statement. It's been one of those days for me, anyway. I'm like, ah, you know, I said it would have been nice if it was a gradual increase. The flip side of that is if we just make the rate adjustment now, they're going to complain once, you know?
Right.
We go with Mary, we go to two, which I was leaning towards, and then we revisit it in a year, they're going to say, we just had a huge increase last year, and now you're going up again. This way here, we just kind of do it once.
Just making up for lost time, all at once.
I just think when you review it in a year, it's not going to curb any of the building. The building that was going to go on is still going to go on.
You'll know right away.
I know, I mean, you know, if we know in a year we're going to increase it again, because 2,000 is in line with Southbridge.
In the conversation I have with the DPW director today in Southbridge, they haven't revisited their rates in years. I haven't run into her today.
They're in the same boat.
Surprised Auburn's so low.
Oh, yeah.
1,000.
Yes. You can't really create any rhyme or reason.
Well, that's like any survey.
So will this have enough of an impact to alleviate perhaps in the future the, the rate increase that we just have to have for water?
Depends on how much building you have. I mean, if the building drops off, this won't have any impact.
No, I know that, but I mean, let's just assume that it's...
I think we're running, we're running out of land, I think, in this town, because they're building on some of the weirdest lots that I've ever seen. You might have some big development, but so, I think a lot of the residential lots are being pretty much sucked up.
I don't think it's going to cover the cost completely, but it's definitely going to help.
You know, I would think with Auburn, too, and I don't know this, but I think every street in Auburn has sewer and water, whereas Sturbridge...
Yeah, Southbridge is...
And that's what you got to consider, the size, I look at the size of Auburn, right?
Right.
It's huge compared to a town like Sturbridge. They have a lot, they have a lot more customers, they have a lot more industry, they have a lot more commercial.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion, one way or the other? To approve, disapprove, to think about it, or...
I'll make the motion to accept the new water and sewer connection fees list as presented tonight.
I will second.
Discussion? All in favor? That was painless.
So far.
Well, Shane says he'll get the calls.
They usually do.
Okay, next, we have consideration and possible action on the annual town meeting warrant and special town meeting warrant. Bob?
You have copies of the latest warrant, now draft eight. This is reviewed by council, and there have been a few minor changes to a few articles. I can point those out, but as you know, the board didn't approve all of the articles, and there are still some placeholders at the end that are neither numbered nor, in some cases, have summaries depending on whether they're going to survive, and then they can be voted on and placed by the, by the board. But I can mention the ones that council had some changes on, and that all of them are, I shouldn't say all of them are minor, there are a few, particularly the land articles, Cedar Street, 7 Main and 8 Brookfield, council had some comments on just to put them in, in proper form. There was a minor change also to the wording in the tax incentive article. Just, just language change, just changing on the fifth line, this is a request, and I think that was fairly minor, but you might want to look at, and also, the Affordable Housing Trust said insert a new article twice, and that was, that was omitted from the beginning of the article. But I think the board might want to revote 7 Main Street, 8 Brookfield, and 7 Cedar Street.
Okay, what article numbers?
33, yeah, 33 is 7 Main, 34 is Cedar Street, and 35 is Brookfield. And there was a slight change to the library HVAC system, which had in free cash for 1,001. By the way, you were looking for numbers in these articles, and we don't have a number yet from our engineer, you know, as you know, we were looking to have some, a further look to see if there could be, we could accomplish what we needed with the HVAC system without sprinklers and some necessary ADA improvements to bring down the cost. They needed about six weeks since when we asked them to take on the scope of work, so we should have that shortly, but the board wanted some numbers for tonight, so we had to go with a higher number. So the HVAC article is 1.1 million, but the change there was it starts off transfer from free cash, but I also had in determine whether it should be, amount should be raised by borrowing or otherwise.
Yeah, what article?
I'm sorry, that's 37. We had all the bases covered on that one, but I think the intent is to go with free cash, so we didn't need the language at the end. That was just the omission of, and to determine whether this amount should be raised by borrowing or otherwise. Want to start with 33, then?
Yeah, I just will start with 33, 7 Main Street.
I have back the purchase and sale agreement. The owner has agreed to this price, so that's a firm number.
Okay. Did you people vote on this article?
Yeah.
Yep, we were three to one.
I think we were waiting on the negotiation of the sewer.
The number?
Yeah, well, no, the negotiation. If I'm recalling this correctly?
Yeah, we, we didn't have the specific number for the property, wasn't, and then we didn't have the negotiations, so we now have one more piece.
Yeah. Me, it makes sense, this is for now.
And for, and for, and for a buildable, for a buildable lot that, you know, we may lose if we don't have it reasonably.
It's not much for a buildable lot.
And, and the thing is, if, you know, we're not going to do anything now, but in the future, if we decide to do something, it's good to have that lot to keep the door open on that lot.
Right, so does somebody want to, oh gosh, do we have to go through rescinding the original motion?
I don't think you have to rescind anything, because we voted to place that now we have another motion to support.
Yeah, but if we, if we want to...
I think you just re-vote it. If you're going to change your vote, you just re-vote it.
Do we have to vote to open the warrant? Go through all that, too?
Didn't you do that at the last meeting, and you never closed it?
Oh, that's true.
So it's still open?
I think for the selectmen, it's always open.
I mean, he can just make a motion to support now, because we already placed it.
Okay, whatever.
I don't care, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to support Article 33.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eight four to one.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Ian.
Ian.
Yeah, not me.
That was a winning bet.
So 35.
Oh, did you say that there was a prob, that there was something different about 34?
34.
Yeah, I can, it doesn't change my vote. I can read the old language, but I think in particular, what was added was the language at the end, to dedicate such land forever to the protection of Article 97 of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution. Language added by council. So I think, I don't know, I think that would present a definite difference in what was already voted.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I vote to approve Article 34.
To approve or to place in support or...
Oh, place in support, I'm sorry. I read...
I'll second, Jamie's motion.
Discussion? I wasn't here on the original vote, and I am not in favor of this article. When that land was given to Sturbridge, it was given for municipal use, and I don't consider land in conservation municipal use. Somewhere down the line, we may use it for something. Someone even jokingly suggested that we're running out of space at the cemetery, but, so I'm not in favor of this.
Actually, it's not a joke. It's true.
Oh, yeah.
Probably be technical, but I think we already voted to approve it. We actually voted to place and support.
Yeah, this is for the new language.
They changed the language, and I...
Oh, but don't we have to, don't we have to have a motion to reconsider, change the vote and re-vote it? We don't? I don't know, that's how we've usually done it when we've changed it, it doesn't matter to me.
I think a six and a half dozen, isn't it?
Okay, yeah.
I mean, we've already, no, Mary's right.
Triggered it, that was, I was...
Yeah, but Mary's, right, we have always voted to rescind the original end, but...
But the language did change. I think you have to do it the other way if the language didn't change. Someone in the majority has to make a motion to reconsider. Go ahead, to be first and seconded.
I agree, I was under the impression that because it changed, that, that's why we're re-voting.
Maybe that's true, so...
Well, anyways, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? All opposed? Eight four to one. Then we have Article 35. Bob, comments on this, because it is a quagmire.
I don't know whether you want to wait and discuss this further in executive session, but we did go out to bid on this. My understanding was that the town had issued an RFP, Invitation for Bids, no takers. I was contacted by a party that was interested in it. We received the bids Monday. You have copies of that public. The bid was 150,000, which was less than what they told me they were willing to offer. So I think it's up to the board to decide what you want to do on this. There were a number of things mentioned at the last meeting, perhaps waiting on this for a possible use as a fire substation. I didn't make copies, sorry, but I did forward to you information from the chief about that and some costs. I can make copies if you didn't see it, I can run that off, but you did get something from Chief Grasso about that possibility. So that's up to the, up to the board on how you want to proceed now that we have the bid.
Of course, that's...
I should say, oh, sorry, I interrupted, but there are some issues with this. I asked the town planner, Jane Bubon, to look at it. She did have some concerns with the plan that was submitted, whether the, there was enough land for the parking that was being proposed, and also, my understanding in that zone is it has to be primarily commercial, and the bidders are submitting a plan for 12 units of residential and only two minutes of, two units of commercial. So just a quick review presents a problem with zoning on that, what's been submitted.
Mary?
I'm just going to make an observation. I feel like this is the exact same wording, pretty much, that we had three years ago with our former town administrator, and...
And town meeting kind of spoke loud and clear that they did not want an open-ended sale of, or lease of Eight Brookfield Road. They didn't want to put that much authority, if you will, in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. They wanted us to go forward with an actual proposed sale or a proposed lease. And I feel like we're just coming back now and we're doing exactly what the then-town meeting, now I know it depends on who shows up at these, but I feel like we're just re-presenting exactly what they didn't want us to do. And we don't have any kind of number.
We do have a number.
Well, now we do, but.
Well, we do, but I'm just making a comment on the way it is right now. I mean, is the number, are we going to go into executive session, determine if we want to, you know, entertain that bid and then put that in this warrant article?
It's up to you, but I mean, the bid is public, it's a public process. I mean, my understanding.
But this is still leaving it up to, hold on, this still leaves it up to us, right? So we go to town meeting, they vote this in. It's up to us whether we take or we don't take that bid. There's nothing in this warrant article that's requiring us to take one of the bids that was offered. Right, so what I'm saying is it's still putting the same amount of power in the selectmen that town meeting did not want.
Really rejected.
Overwhelmingly rejected.
I think the easiest way to solve this, my suggestion, I would like to pull this article until we have a clear understanding of the bid, what they're suggesting, the concerns expressed by Jean. And that's not going to be done before the posting needs to go, so.
I agree with you. I'll make that motion. I move to withdraw, I guess, no, I guess ranking a motion not to place could be the right thing, or to rescind.
Right, to rescind.
Okay, I make a motion to rescind Article thirty-five, sale or lease of Eight Brookfield Road from the warrant.
I'll second, spelled syndrome.
Mary, you seconded?
Yes.
Could I say something under discussion?
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I was initially, you know, in favor of doing this when we got the bid back. It's not earth-shattering money that's going to change anything the town's doing one way or the other, so. But still like to try to come to a resolution for that building and either take it down and do something with it, or.
I think I'm very disappointed with one hundred and fifty thousand. To me, that's a choice piece of property on the intersection of one forty-eight and twenty. And I'm just, I would not sell it for one hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm amazed at what the town has it assessed at, though. The land is only assessed at, what, sixty-nine thousand one hundred?
And that was part of the bid package. I mean, my understanding was the town meeting wanted the, didn't want it open-ended and wanted the selectmen to come back with a number. And the RFP was issued by the previous administrator, there were no takers. I was contacted by someone who was interested, which is why we went through the process again, so you would have a number. I mean, the board was well aware of what I was doing. You have the one fifty, so it's up to you whether you want to put it on the warrant or not, but at least you have a number now and you have an idea of what the market is.
Right, no, I did want a number because the way, but what I'm saying is, I wasn't sure the way Article thirty-five is right now. This is the way it was going to be forwarded at town meeting. My understanding from our last meeting was that this language was probably going to stay the same, and that the motion at town meeting was going to be with the number, and that's when I got into, people have a right to be know in the warrant itself, in the warrant article itself, the number. So that's the way I remember that conversation, that the number was only going to be put in the motion. And I wasn't satisfied with that personally.
Well, depending on what the motion is, but the, but the way this is written, I mean, even if this passed at town meeting, it would still be completely up to you.
That's exactly what town meeting did.
Fairly certain this is academic at this.
Yeah, no, I think a lot more needs to be done with us than others on this, so. I'll make, oh, Jamie made it and I second it. Any more discussion? All in favor of rescinding this? The next one, Bob?
This one is for, obviously, the parking lot at five oh one Main Street. We had had an estimate of approximately four hundred and sixty thousand to finish the construction. The ARPA committee approved two thirty, which is why this two thirty is there. You may recall there was also the earmark, and I've asked for an extension on the earmark, which is for the parking lot. And so that Senator Goby's office is, is working on that and getting that extension because obviously, if this passes, you're not going to have it approved by June thirtieth, so the, I mean, completed by June thirtieth, so the number will continue, and it might be wise to just stay with this number due to whatever, construction costs or what have you, and you'll have the additional fifty thousand as a contingency.
So hopefully, it will only be one hundred and eighty thousand.
Hopefully, or even less.
Yeah. I will say, on this article, definitely needs to be explained a whole lot better. I mean, we had zero explanation on it last year. Bombed.
The scope of the project, not, not just paving.
I would even like it, I know we can't say it's going to happen, but I would like it if the summary indicated that we do have fifty thousand earmark from the state that could, you know, not promise voters anything, but that could very well reduce what we need to one eighty. You know what I mean? That likely, it is likely that we will get fifty thousand dollars, but we're asking for two thirty in the event that fifty thousand doesn't come through.
Sure, that could be added easily.
Yeah, that's just what I think, because I mean, that's going to.
Makes it sound better.
Yeah, it's made a difference.
So we voted four to oh last time, so that's still good, right?
Yep.
So on to thirty-seven?
Yeah, I was just giving Bob a chance, he's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's doing two jobs.
My bad.
Speak slowly, please.
Gotcha.
Okay, Article thirty-seven, Bob?
Well, as you know, there's a great deal of concern about this HVAC system, certainly in speaking to the librarian and through her, the trustees, there's a great deal of concern that this gets replaced. I think the general feeling is that it's on its last legs. This is a estimate from, we've had a couple of studies done on this, and this is a, hopefully the high end. I think it's been explained to the board for the longest time on the capital improvement plan. This was in the six hundred thousands, but yet, when the latest cost estimate came in because of additions to the scope of the work that drove a sprinkler system and also ADA improvements, then this went up, not just because of the additions in the scope of the work, but also because of the sprinkler system and the ADA improvements to over a million dollars. And I mentioned earlier, ESS engineering has been hired to do the study with cost estimates and do the engineering to prepare the construction documents, so we asked them, since they were going to be doing some additional cost estimating anyway, to meet with the building inspector and the fire chief and to see if there was a way for this added scope that was going to bring the HBA system to additional rooms. And that additional work was going to trigger the sprinkler systems, if there was a way to reduce the scope of work and bring this down to a manageable number, I mean roughly half of what this is now. I think, I hate to speak for the librarian and the trustees, but I think their main concern is that the HVAC system is replaced. They're not wedded to this larger scope of work that's triggering the sprinkler system and the ADA improvements. They would, they just want to see the system replaced, so if that can be done for the lower amount, from what I understand, they'd be fine with that.
The sprinklers and the rest is just about quote.
Yes.
You do so much.
Yeah, so if you start, I don't see, as you touch it.
Do we go in with the initial number at this meeting? We're going to get more details, there's going to be more things, and then we're going to have a special meeting at some point down the road or another town meeting, and we could come back and ask for additional triggers, right? So the initial scope of the work was whatever, six eighty?
I think you'll have the number this month. You'll have it before town meeting, and certainly you can always go lower. And in speaking to the moderator in the finance committee, they do like to see numbers on there because, you know, or, I'm sorry, they, they like to see numbers rather than a sum of money, because a sum of money could be anything and could go above. I mean, just by way of background or my background, I mean, I've worked in towns where every single finance article is written out a sum of money, so that's why I had this in here before. Sturbridge's, like other towns, has its own way of doing things, which is fine, so that's why you have that higher number in there. So you can always lower it at town meeting, so this is being on the safe side since.
Better than doing the opposite.
Right.
Yeah, you can't, you can't.
You can't go up.
If you have a number printed in the warrant, you can't go higher.
No, but you can, they could do a substitute motion to do it, wouldn't they?
I don't think so.
You can't go higher than what's in the, in the warrant.
Because I think to Mary's point, we could put one in here at twenty-five thousand, go to meeting, somebody can make a substitute motion, ask them for a million, and people who might have come to the meeting would show up.
Correct.
Okay, now, had you people voted on this?
No. We were missing, we were missing the dollar value.
Yeah, we weren't going to, and I remember, I like a dollar figure myself, and I know that.
Everybody does.
I just have a question, I mean, I know we don't want to trigger the ADA with the rest and the sprinkler system and all that, but is it, I think, I forgot who I asked, and I forgot what the answer was, but let's just say we were able to go with just doing the HVAC, and it didn't trigger and it was less. If we went back to redo and do the sprinkler system, and, you know, because really, our library should have a sprinkler system, it would cost a lot more, correct, than doing it piecemeal than it would if we just hit the bullet and did it all at once. I think I asked that and somebody gave me the answer, I don't remember who it was.
I don't know if I answered that question, but I think that the same point is, I doubt things are getting cheaper if we do it, delay any, almost.
Requirements for sprinklers certainly aren't going down, if anything, they're being increased.
Right, I mean, I'd be inclined at this point to do the whole project, but, I mean, in any event, it's not going to change our vote on this right now. But I'm saying, you know, a sprinkler system is for fires, right? So at like some point, you know, if we, if we are doing the HVAC system, and then in three or four years, we're like, wait a minute, we should have done our sprinkler system and made it ADA compliant, won't it cost a lot more down the road for two reasons? The reason Jamie gave, but also, when you do a project, isn't it hard that you have to go back in? I think it might have been you butched it.
No, that wasn't me.
Oh, so, oh, I know, it was, I think it was Robin. So you have to go back in and some of the labor is repeated because you're taking down things that you already took down. I think it was Robin that I asked that question. That's something to think about.
Yeah, I think it's a lot, but I will move to support and place Article thirty-seven.
Second.
Okay, let's see, Amy. Any discussion? All in favor? I have zero. Okay, so the next one is the fiscal pump station in Force Main Project. Is that Article thirty-eight or?
Well, I, I think that, I mean, I think these that aren't numbered may need to be replaced, I'm sorry, placed somewhere that the board feels is appropriate, or you could leave it up to staff to do that. But this is a follow-up, obviously, to the Tag and Bond study that was done, and they mentioned that the board would like the overall study presently to be put on hold, but an additional twenty-five thousand to finish the work, the, what, test borings and so forth that Tag and Bond felt they needed to do to be able to complete the study.
Complete the design.
Design. Okay, questions, comments? Yeah, the article number's going to change because we.
Scratch thirty-five.
Pulled the other one, so.
I guess some of two minds on this one, I mean, the land I voted for because, you know, once that's gone, how are you going to get the land back if you don't take by eminent domain, right? I mean, and it's only seventy thousand dollars and it's a build-up lot. This, I feel like you can put this on hold till our special town meeting, waiting, see whether we're going to do something with Southbridge. I mean, I don't know, I guess, I thought they would have been able to complete everything that they wanted to absent our desire, and I'm not saying it wasn't a good one, to enclose the, the station like in a structure. Because when we, when we engaged them for the design, we did give them enough, I thought, to complete the design absent our change, right?
Yeah, the only change is they need to.
Right, because we changed what we want.
No, we never changed.
We always, well, we were always going to owe them twenty-five thousand more.
No, we always told them exactly what we wanted for a pump station, we wanted it to be built just like the one on Trail Road, so there was no change on our end.
They just decided, again, that they hadn't.
It's not just the test borings on the property for the building, he also wants to go into the street and do some more boring, which I didn't think was going to be necessary.
That was a change order on behalf of, by them.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just asking you now that they're not here, should they not have included that in their original bid?
I don't know.
Why is it on us now to come up with the other twenty-five thousand?
I believe in the original bid, they excluded it.
And what was the basis for that?
I think in the original bid, and the reason we went with Tag and Bond, because it was, talk of going with a different engineering firm, the reason that we, the town decided to go with them is they put the water line in and they had already done drilling all the way up one thirty-one, so we assumed that they would just be able to use those logs. Now they're coming back and saying that they got to do some more drilling, where the building's going to go, so that should have been right from the beginning, because we told them we wanted a building. Now they're saying they want to go back into one thirty-one too and do some drilling just to reconfirm what they had found when they had drilled previously.
Okay, so I think, it's fine, but we're both, they're saying, they are saying something different than what we are saying, because that's not what they said when they gave the proposal. They said as a result of us wanting a building, they went as far as they could and it's going to cost us more money, because they were going to do what they did in Orleans and just enclose it. And they said that the reason they have added work to do is because of us, but you're saying it has nothing to do with us, that we said we wanted that from the beginning in their original bid.
That's correct.
I mean, we'll have a meeting of the minds with them.
Him saying that he was originally going to design a underground pump station is strictly in his mind. He never discussed that with us. When we went out with him, we showed him the pump station that we wanted on the trail, the one at the corner of the trail in Brookfield Road, because it's been working perfectly, it'd been there forever, it was a good design, and that's what, that's what we told him. So that what he told you was maybe conceptual in his head, but it's something we ever discussed.
And I think in his presentation, didn't he have a picture of the building?
Yes.
So, because that's because we brought him out there and said, this is what we want.
Right, I understand, but I, that's why I said, let me see, I had said, where's the original contract? Because it seems to me that this probably should have already been included in there.
I think when you ask him, and I think, and I think that you should ask him, but I think you're going to find out it's not just drilling on the site, I think he wants to do some drilling on one thirty-one, make sure he knows where he's going to run into ledge. That was my understanding. My thought process, you've already been down that road with a water line, you've already drilled, you should be able to use the old drilling logs, but going to them, they still want to do some more drilling, which if, and if they don't do the drilling, and then they start putting the water line in, and then they hit ledge, you're going to have change orders.
Well, we already do, I mean, I, I just, I just feel like, why is the town bearing this and not at least being shared with, with Tag and Bond?
Well, even if they, even if they had put it in, I mean, the town would still be paying, so it's just.
Out of their bid.
Why can't?
A thousand more in their bid to us.
Yeah, we would pay twenty-five thousand more to begin with, instead of adding it later.
Instead of now, so, so it's, I mean, it's not much, we would have paid once then or now, so. Anything else from the board? Hey, somebody want to make a motion?
What are, what number are we calling this?
Well, for the sake, thirty-eight.
I'll make a motion to place in support Article thirty-eight.
Geez, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Two, all opposed. Three.
I think that we should go back to Tag and Bond and the motion fails.
So you want to put the design on hold?
I think they should come up with some of this, some of this money. They should come up with some of this, some of this money.
The other factor is, why can't they complete the design based on the prior drilling logs? And then, if, if we reach an agreement with Southbridge and we don't do this, then we save 25,000. If we go forward with the project, then we say, okay, before you do the project, you spend this money, you make sure you're in the right, and then you move forward with it.
We may be able to do that. I think he did, I think he explained that, um, he couldn't do the, he wasn't, wasn't 100% sure of how he would set the foundation without doing the drilling first. And I, and I understand, 25,000, right, should have been in there, but he didn't. But I think if he doesn't do the drilling, and he goes and he puts your building in, and the thing sinks out of sight, and there right down the road, now the town's going to be stuck with it. So not saying that, that they're right to come back with 25,000, but I think he's definitely doing his due diligence.
I'm not saying he's not, but I think that that should probably, that should at least be shared.
Well, to Ian's point, we're only in the design phase. We're not going to actually put the building there yet anyway, and before we get to that point, we can have them say, okay, we're going to go through with this, now do your drilling, and we'll give you 25, at that point, so, pretty much what.
That's, that's what I'm getting at, is that, you know, it's an incomplete design. I know that when we talked about it, Chase talked about it, that once we get the design in hand, it's going to be good for a long time. Nothing's going to change about that land.
Yes.
But that.
Twenty years.
Right, but that, at this point where everything's so up in the air, and I know 25,000 is like a piddly amount of money in this budget, but it just seems like with everything else we get going on, anywhere we can shave a little bit is going to help. And like, you know, you just come down to it, and we say, okay, we got to do this, then 25,000 is not going to be a big deal because we're going to be spending however many millions to do this project anyway, so.
All right, I'll talk to them and see, tell them that, that's our standpoint, when we finish the design with what you've got, if we actually move forward.
And if we tack it on.
Say some select people think that that should have been something that was in their bid.
I'm going to look at it to see if, see if they, sometimes they may have excluded it. They do exclude things. A lot of people do that, and then if you, if you do need it.
Right, but their explanation for why they needed that money was put totally on us, that we changed. I, I mean, I was sitting right here, and they said, we can't go any further because we need to do this because you now want a structure to enclose it. And that's not something we envisioned to start with. I mean, we can listen to the tape, that's what they said. And so now I'm hearing something different that we did envision.
Well, he envisioned, he envisioned that on his own because Shane and I were with him during the design process, we were telling him what we wanted, and that underground station was never talked about.
And in our defense, that's why they have the picture of the building. We brought him out there and said, this is what we want.
Like I said, he may have said to you, and on tape, I heard it too, that, you know, he was thinking this, but we didn't, we didn't talk about that with him. And that's probably what he would have done if we hadn't directed him to do this. But we did direct him to put the building in, so that's what he did, so.
But I think some of that additional cost, they should have to suck up, too.
Yeah, let me see the writing on the.
Okay, so.
Question. Sorry, but you mentioned earlier you were going to talk to them about finishing the design with the amount that's, but, I mean, that'll be when the board approves going forward, right? I mean, they had asked that this be held up.
Yeah, right, we're all held up now until the question.
And even if there's a caveat on the design that says, you know, subject to additional geographic data that would be included in this, or whatever.
Right, so, so to your point, right, they said they could do the design, they need this 25,000, and to his point, they should be able to do the design with some notes that if we decide to move forward with the project, then we would have to go and do the drilling. I, I think the way we should.
Okay, so it's not going to be on the warrant?
Coming on, yep.
Isn't that 38? So the next one is Article 38 now. Remove and replace plant media water plant. Is that the source of the money appropriation?
I think you have copies of the motion, um, the article itself, the way it's written up, and also a motion that needs to be your, your motion if you're going to support these, both the plant medium and the, and the generator.
The single page.
A question for Barbara, or for you?
Go ahead.
Um, so why are we recommending borrowing for this, but the HVAC for 1.1, we're recommending free cash? What's, what's the reason for a borrowing for one and using cash for the other?
Well, so this, these next two articles are water and sewer, so you wouldn't take them out of free cash, and so it's the fund balance that we've been, we've reduced, and then, uh, the hit to, is this, this is the water one, we're right, okay. So the hit to the, the water rate would have been quite substantial to just add in 481,000. And so when we discussed it, we thought if it's going to move forward, it would make sense to do a, to pay it back over five years, because it's not a ton of money, but it would have less of an impact on the water rate, and then the generator, the next article, same thing. Uh, we don't want it to complete the, the fund balances anymore, but it wouldn't have such a substantial impact. And do you all mind if I turn the lights on?
Oh, no.
I kind of, I don't care, I, I kind of like it.
Make a motion that Barbara turns the lights on?
I think that.
Barbara, just educate me on this again. Does some of this get borne by all of the town to the extent that?
It would if we borrow it.
Okay, so, so the town will share, even if, so the town as a whole will share on this cost, even if a resident isn't on services, it won't. So here's my question.
Sorry.
I guess I'm asking why they don't share in a portion to the extent that water and sewer services are used by the town hall, the library, how does that all get factored in?
We, all, all the town buildings pay for their water and sewer usage.
So, in that sense, they will bear some of this cost, okay?
Yes, because it will be next year when we set the rate for water and sewer, the, the first year of the debt service will be factored into what the rate needs to be to pay back the debt.
Oh, okay, because I had that concern where, you know, we're appropriating, whereas we usually use the fund balance, right, but.
And then we, so when we've done other projects, like with the water lines that we've run, or the sewer, it's, it says the same language, but we know that because it's water or sewer, it's going to be repaid through water fees and sewer.
And at least we know if that question comes up at town meeting, somebody says, I don't have water and sewer, why am I paying for this?
I can't.
We get, yes.
Yeah, Barbara will be there. Okay, any other questions on that Article 38? Mary?
Article, this is the plant media.
They're on this sheet.
Right, I know, but this is the 481,000 one, right?
No, it's 200.
It's 481.
220 is the generator. I have a question on the, um.
481.
Okay, so, yeah, we did kind of talk about it at the last meeting. I mean, it did kind of, first time we saw this was in our last draft, and I think it said draft six, draft five or six. It's nothing that came up earlier, and so we had a lot of questions.
I understand.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
It's a lot of money.
Well, it's not only a lot of money, I mean, I don't even understand what removing and inspecting and replacing iron removal plant media is.
Okay, so.
So, you know, we're kind of being asked to, like, approve of a $500,000.
And that's why I'm here to explain it to you.
It would have been, it would have been nice if it was on an earlier warrant, and it wasn't. But, um, Butch has indicated that some of this is prospective, that may, and correct me if I'm wrong, all of the, you don't know at this point if they all need to be replaced because they haven't all been inspected yet, is that correct?
Let me give you the whole history, and then I'll answer most of your questions, okay? So in 2012, we did an upgrade to the iron removal plant, which is the original water plant that was built in 1982. That upgrade was, um, because you would, had a well that's considered under the influence of surface water, so you have to meet new criteria. The, the vessels had never been taken apart before that, to my knowledge. So when we went in, there was a lot of stuff that needed to be done, and we did all the work, and we used a media called Green Sand Plus. Green Sand Plus has a life expectancy of 10 to 15 years. The town knew that, or at least the DPW director, who signed off on it at the time, knew that in 10 to 15 years, you would have to revisit exactly what we're doing now. We're in year 10. You've already pushed over a billion gallons of water through these vessels. It's also removed 103,000 pounds of iron and 12,000 pounds of manganese. One of the limits that determines how well the filters are running is how often you have to backwash and your tubidities. We're seeing that we have to backwash more frequently, and when we don't, the tubidity starts to climb higher. So that's an indication that the media is reaching the end of its life. When, to, in order to go in and change the media, you have to go in and take all the media out. So you have sand, you have gravel, screens in there, there's valves in there, there's piping in there. The proposal before you tonight is to go in and take all the media out, inspect the vessels, see what needs to be repaired, and if any of the piping or sand valves that repaired in 2012 need to be repaired, they'll be repaired also. If the stuff that was fixed in 2012 is still in good condition, and the filters are still in good condition, and you only have to replace the meter, media, which you were going to have to do anyways, then that cost gets reduced by $40,000, and, and it could end up being like a $290,000 project.
Actually, it's 40%.
Reduced by 40% if all the filters don't need to be replaced?
Yes, 40%.
And that additional information that we received, I don't know what it was, a couple days after, definitely clarified it a lot better for us.
It's, it's a routine, it's.
That's been some of the back and forth with you. I'm not a water and sewer expert, and, you know, Butch made it a point to say that, you know, you're going to receive an award for how well the system is, is run, and that, and that's great. And I think a lot of it just comes down to just trying to break it down for us into, you know, plain language, and, um, and just staying ahead of it, too.
It's routine to us, we don't.
Exactly, yeah.
A lot of times.
And we, and they're like, all of a sudden, it's like $480,000 worth of sand, you know, to us, it just sounds crazy, but.
That's exactly what it is, too.
But I'm still, thank you, I'm just, um, I still want to go back, and I just want to make, do we have to take, so if all the filters don't need to be replaced, that 481,000 goes down by 40%?
If, if there's no issues.
There's no other repairs, that's, that's the idea.
There's nothing else.
But, I guess, are we taking all of this money prematurely, or do, do we only have to take enough to do the inspection? I mean, you're taking enough, I feel like we're padding it a little bit.
You're not, because, well, we are.
I don't know.
But once it's offline, okay, so say we do the work in November, now we take the filter offline, that's one filter that can't produce water. And then we decide that the, you know, the piping's bad, the drain's bad, we got to do that work. We can't sit and wait for the next town meeting to come back and get that money. We need to, we need to fix that filter that day, because you do it in series. You do one filter, you go to filter two, then the filter three. So if we need to do that work, we have to have that money allocated. It's not like you can just go in, or you could, you could go in and then just put the media back, and then go back a year later and redo the work, but it's just going to end up costing you more money. So I understand your point, yes, does he have more money there? Yes. But that's just in case, we're not going to know until we get inside the filter itself what it's going to take to fix it and put it back online.
I get it. So how much did we pad, pad this by, the full amount, like this is the worst case?
Forty, forty percent.
That's what they said. If everything's perfect, it'll be 40% less.
Right, but every, if everything isn't, this is the maximum amount we need.
According to the engineer.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. This is as bad as it gets, and you're planning accordingly, and then it could only get better.
Yes.
Correct.
Are, are the costs static right now? And I'm not, I, everything you said made sense, but it just, or, or do we have like an actual bid, are we locked in on it, or?
No, this is just a proposal for them to take it, write us back, and put it out to bid.
Okay.
So if bidding comes in good, it could be less.
Right.
And as you stated earlier, things, things aren't getting cheaper.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Or more. And, and the green sand, it's two things. At your other plant, the green sand's 13 years old, but the water quality is 10 times better. You're probably going to get 20, 25 years out of that, where at this plant, the water quality's not as good, so the filters have to work harder.
Was it, was it a newer and more improved sand? The, the name, the name had changed, or is it the same?
Actually, there were a lot of research and facts, I thought that might get brought up. So originally, all, all filters use green sand, but there was such demand for green sand in this area because everybody has iron and manganese, not everybody, but a lot of towns, that they came up with a green sand plus. So that's how that came about.
So this is replacing all the filters?
All three.
It's three.
In this one plant, yes.
Are there any?
You all should come down and actually take a tour at some point, especially like, like Mary, it's, when you see how big this is, this is not like a, a little filter, these are enormous.
Especially when they have an excavator.
Oh, it's interesting.
It reduces 61% of your water, too.
Back, no, I did when Sturbridge Hills had a complaint about.
Oh, there, what, sprinklers?
Yeah, no, it's, it's quite a facility.
And they won.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Somebody then want to make a motion on Article 38?
I'll make a motion to place in support Article 38.
I'll second it. Wait, do we have to do, we have to do it by the list, though? Because we have.
Yeah, we have the list.
No, no, I think we have to have the article.
It's written.
Yeah, underneath it, the second one.
Is that what you're reading?
Do you want me to read this one?
Yeah, read it.
Do we have to read it? I just think we have to, yeah, we do have to read it.
I'll make a motion that the town appropriates 481,000 to pay costs of removing, inspecting, and replacing iron removal plant media, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, has authorized the borrow set amount under the pursuant GLC 44.87A, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Then we have Article 39, see if the town will appropriate $220,000 to pay costs of replacing a sewer department generator, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any action relative thereto.
I had one question on this, just right off the bat. Um, will the old generator go to auction, similar to all of our equipment that we got rid of, or is it totally worn to the point of?
It's 53 years old.
Me to get it out of the building, it's going to come out in pieces, and I don't think I'll be able to put it back.
I think you have a bidder, is what I was.
I was, I was just curious, because, you know, this is, there's a buyer for everything, and I didn't know if it was going to, I was more.
It's always possible.
I mean, it runs, and it works, but honestly, to get, we didn't even include removing the generator in the price, we just figured it's something we'll do in-house, and when I send my guys in, they had to tear it apart, it's probably not going to be put back together.
Scrap, I would assume.
And I, and then I, honestly, we took the generator from, um, Chris Hill, and we did that project, I think it's still sitting there.
We haven't, the DPW, we haven't bothered to try and get rid of it yet, but.
Sort of go in the next gov, gov auction.
That one we can remove intact.
That one we moved intact, this one.
This one here is going to be in pieces.
I mean, the air filter's on it, the date's in 1954, we have to track them down to find it, it's that old, I don't see anybody using it.
You got a big backyard, Ian.
Not that big. How, I don't think the school would appreciate me running that in the backyard. Okay, that's all. I, I was just curious from a cost, you know, recovery, if it's going to be worth anything taken.
There's been a lot of, you know, bad information. The generator still runs, and it still works, and we, we exercise it weekly, and we run it under load, it's just, it's 50 years old. I don't know how much longer it'll last. That is your biggest pump station. Um, the other issue you have there is the sewer main between the pump station and the wastewater plant isn't big enough to handle all the flow that we get at certain times. It's happened five times since 2007. So when your pumps are running with full power, you can't even keep up. So if you have no power at all, and you had a big rain event, a snow event, I don't know if we can stop it from overflowing, and if it overflows, it goes into the stream, that stream runs by your drinking water wells, just happens to be a water well that's underneath, under the influence of that stream. Um, so, and, and it's, it's something we definitely, I recommend. Um, I know there's grant money out there that's been, that's been kicked around, I mean, obviously, that'd be great, be great to get the grant money. Um, I'm not telling you to wait, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we need to do it right now, I can't tell you that, it's 50 years old, it could run for another five years and never have an issue. I could be back here next week saying, we don't have any backup power, we're running out.
Well, here's my question. Thank you for reminding me, because Shane, uh, Butch is the one that said there's money, a lot of money floating around right now. If we go and appropriate this money now, what effect does that have on us getting a grant? I mean, cor, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I would look, if I was a state official, I'd look at it and say, they don't need this grant money, they already appropriated their money with town funds at town meeting. I mean, are we losing an opportunity where, you said a significant amount of money is out there?
Yeah, we, since the last time we spoke, um, we were on a. Yeah, we, since the last time we spoke, we were on an informational Zoom with, with the state about this grant and they weren't quite as, the first time we were on, they were saying generators, 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 you know, go for it. So we sort of find. Now they're telling us, there's a lot of little caveats to that. You have to have a, you have to need a generator and you have to be doing upgrades to the generator for whatever reason. So we're going to have to massage this grant to, you know, we're going to have to move it outside. We may have to build a, get it up and higher so it's out of the flood zone. That would be an improvement. So it's not quite as cut and dry, but Barbara might be able to answer that. I mean, what if we appropriate the money? I don't know if we would be, no, I don't think we would be ineligible. There's nothing in, I don't think there's anything on the application that says having appropriated money. I mean, I think we'd still be eligible.
Well.
No, I understand your point.
Why would the state ever, they have 10, you know, it's just common sense.
But the other way around, like Shane says, it's 53 years old. If it does fail, during one of the last major storms we had, I think it might have been the hurricane we had last year, last summer, with the pumps running full tilt, we couldn't keep up with the water coming in. So we were, we were having pump trucks pump out of that wet well and taking it to the plant, back and forth. We had, what, three trucks?
Out in front of Burgess, right? It was 15,000 dollars.
Okay, and when does it have to be, just give me the timelines. When does it have to be submitted?
July.
And when do they disclose the recipient?
I don't know. I don't know.
Like six months or a year or three months?
I don't know.
What's, what's the average life expectancy of one of these? Like if you buy, so let's say we buy this one, what, how long does it last typically?
I wouldn't say, honestly, I'd have to research it, but I can tell you it's not 50 years.
No, no, I wouldn't think so.
Honestly, I would have to do some research.
A diesel truck with us is 20 years. But that runs probably a lot more. Well, it may be longer than that, so.
Okay. It's taken care of, we do the maintenance.
Finish my story. Where the pumps running full tilt and the generator running, we had three trucks, septic trucks running just to keep up. Now, if we don't have any power at all, just think of how many trucks we would have to have if we could even get them to take all that sewage to the plant.
I'm not saying we don't need it, but if we are applying for a grant, well, I, I guess.
No, and I, at some points I say that, too. But then I say, I don't want to be the guy that said, oh, let's wait and then have it die, you know?
Shane said, it's got 51 years on it.
53 years.
But then you'll address it right away.
It could go in five days.
It doesn't owe us anything, you know?
Oh, no.
If it wasn't your biggest pump station and it wasn't going to overflow and go by your drinking water wells, then I'd say roll the dice.
The other thing.
We will pay for it if we have, that's why I wanted the timelines.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, if you wait a year to find out if you're going to be the recipient, then no. But if you submit it in July and then by August, they, you know, let the municipalities know if you got the grant.
They, they don't work grants that quickly.
Well, no, actually, no, we found out very quickly about the sidewalk.
It may be fairly quick. I just don't know what the timeline is.
It's a.
It's a hazard mitigation grant.
And how much money is floating around the state for these?
They said they have 100 million.
$100 million? I'm, I'm going to wait and see about the grant. I mean, I know it's going to pass here, but I think you gotta.
No, we're definitely, we're after going at it very aggressively.
Oh, I know, but I, I'm, I'm not going to keep repeating myself. If we appropriate the money in June and then we, we ask for the grant in July, we already appropriated the money. I can't imagine the state would give it to us, but I don't.
They're appropriating.
Well, we're approving, I mean, right, but I mean, we're voting in favor of it. Let's put it that way.
It's to get money.
Can we wait to expend?
It doesn't matter. I mean, they're going to vote for it.
I know, but I, I was just going to say, we also appropriated money for the water line right down the street, 1.1 million dollars.
And we got it.
And we got money.
Yeah, it's actually, in my experience, it's the opposite.
You think?
If you don't appropriate the money and you do not put the infrastructure in place to undertake a project, they will not even touch it.
Because we're showing a need by saying that we need it. Showing a need, right? So the state's going to want to.
And not all these grants are 100%. Some of them are partial.
Can we wait to make the expenditure until after the grant is accepted or denied?
Well, you appropriate the money and we'll.
That's what I'm saying.
We'll know more.
Yeah.
And you can appropriate the money and not start the project, but have a whole year.
You can appropriate the money and not, and not spend it.
I'd rather not.
I think we still have to do it because it's on a line of credit or on a bond. I think we have to still do it in this form to Barbara's point. So I'm going to make a motion to, that the town appropriate $220,000 to pay costs of replacing a sewer department generator, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GLC Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Okay, all seconded.
Did the easy part.
I usually do all the reading. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Are you saying we don't have to start the project even though we borrowed the money?
You have a year to do.
Yes.
Okay, once we have, we have a, what is?
I would like to move ahead as quick as possible with the project, but we'll know more about the grant in a few weeks. That, so if we don't need the money, if we get the grant and we don't need the money, we won't use it.
Right, but what, but I think Shane said you don't have to move ahead with the project, even if it's been appropriated, even if it's been.
Well, yeah, we don't, if, I mean, if they give us the money, the town gives us the money, we don't have to do it right away. I mean, I think.
Taking your head, no? Right. You're not going to borrow it, too?
Yeah, so.
Okay, okay, all right. That takes care of my concern.
Hopefully it all falls into place.
And because you're moving it outside and it's near the wetlands, you know, that's, that's going to take some work.
Right, and we have to, that'll help us, though.
I just had a question. Do we have like a contractual agreement with somebody like Milton Caterpillar for generator service in the event of a power outage? Is there any kind of?
We don't because, two things. We do all the maintenance on the generators in-house, that's number one. Number two, when there's a major emergency.
All gone.
Everybody needs generators.
That's why I didn't know if they're.
Usually, and usually what they want is they want you to pay a monthly fee. And then if you don't use them for five years and then, I mean, it's great that they're there when you need them, but that fee can be 300, $400 a month.
Yeah, I was just, it was curiosity. Yep.
Oh, there it is. At the end of the table.
Anything else? Yep.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night. Oh, there's the.
Before you leave the board, if you could revisit Article 12, town budget, do make adjustments.
Yes. And that's. Okay, that would be, I bet nobody has their book.
Let's see if the town.
It would be under Town Administrator Budget, Department Head salaries. To increase that number 275,000.
So moved.
That'll be 40. Okay, sorry, sorry. Just wanted to make.
Yeah, that goes, different line. So, Chase, I'm sorry, you said you made the motion?
Yeah, so, so moved.
Okay, um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll second it, yeah.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, and then, what line item would that ever go under, Barbara?
Or we're going to add a line. And I, so I've never had a car allowance before? Not me personally. But I need to, I'm waiting for DOR to get back to me as to where it goes. So if you could just vote to increase the budget for the car allowance by, I think it's 4,200, and then I will place it where it needs to go, but at least you know that you, you know, that it's there. Okay?
Okay, is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor? Eight, five to nothing. Now, the bottom line is going to change.
Yeah, I'll change everything. I can get.
Okay, and you'll give us the last, the last total on the whole budget? Yeah.
They're dying.
That's why we have to force this tonight.
They're always. Okay, thank you, Barbara, on that. Okay, then, is there a motion to close the warrant?
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, next, on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action on the appointment of the Sturbridge Town Accountant. Bob?
After advertising several times, it was a search that was much longer than I expected and certainly much longer than what Barbara expected. I think we have an excellent candidate. Barbara's met with her twice. I met with her yesterday. You have a copy of her resume. I think she's permanently qualified. She strikes us as being extremely diligent, very knowledgeable and could probably suggest some, possibly suggest some improvements to what we're doing. She's familiar with Munis. I think we're very comfortable with her. She goes by Shelley.
I know, it's.
So I would ask the board to endorse my appointment of her as town accountant. She, when we spoke with her yesterday, we thought there was a possibility that she might be able to start in three weeks. She did have some discussions with her superior in Westfield and also there are some issues with her and her husband getting a new house. So, long story short, unfortunately, that's been possibly extended. She might be able to start sooner, but the date that she has given us now is June 30.
Questions, comments from the board?
And that makes sense, actually, because it's starting point for an account accountant rates end of fiscal year. So it makes sense now.
It's all done.
Uh, but yeah, that makes sense.
Well, it makes sense for them.
It's easier to open than close, right, Barbara?
Would she have the ability to start earlier if she was able to work remotely? If a house and some other things are the problem? Is it something that she's, I'm just saying it to help you, even if it was a day or two days and.
She's a volunteer to come in on weekends and Barbara, I think, has weekends free.
I spoke to her today and we're, we're going to talk again at the beginning of June to see if she can push her date up a little bit, a little bit better understanding then. But I will definitely be in touch with her and she understands, you know, the need to get here as soon as she can.
Okay, questions, comments from the board? Somebody want to make a motion then?
Make a motion to appoint Shelley Zhang as town accountant.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Barbara, next question.
Okay.
We had the salary, 91,000.
What?
Well, she's attached on 30th, I mean, it's quite, as a.
Yeah, okay. Budget passes at town meeting. Okay. Next, we have appointment of Andrew Pelletier and Michael Julian as temporary building inspectors.
Sorry for the late notice. I just learned of this today. Apparently the town, Charlton, for them to fill in when the building inspector went on vacation. My understanding is that the person in Charlton is, can't come because of health issues. So an agreement was worked out with Southbridge. I think the difference is that the Charlton arrangement only, there are some issues now with inspections necessary to be done, which would require 48 hours. So that being the case, the personnel from Southbridge would like to be appointed as assistant building inspectors. Now, this would just be for the term Nelson's vacation through May 20th and also there will be no pay, they won't be paid for inspections. And I think the reciprocal arrangement will be if one of them were to go on vacation and Southbridge Nelson would fill in.
Okay, comments, questions? Motion?
Sure, I will move to appoint Andrew Pelletier and Michael Julian as temporary building inspectors.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. All the business, Ian?
I have none.
Case?
I have none.
Muri? Um, no, just to say that I did go to the majority of the meeting that, that the Charter Review Committee invited us to. I couldn't stay for all of it because it started at four o'clock. But I did say that it'd be useful if they had a meeting with us that was later because I said, you know, people have to work.
Could we get the, what they're proposing?
They're not proposing anything. They're just getting input from people.
They're, yeah, they're still at the point of getting input, although I don't have a copy because I have to leave for special events, but they did have a list. So there is docket, they do have some.
I was under the impression that they were trying to meet with us, tell us.
No, no, that's not a lot of, but they do have, they do have, you know, they reached out to the community and there were a lot of members of the finance committee that attended and the town clerk attended. Anyway, they had a list of suggestions that had come in from different residents or probably committee people about possible changes and why some liked it the way it is. You know, so I just wanted to give you an update. You know, the chair of the finance committee likes the way things are done currently with the most, you know, the main motion being the finance committee, because it came up, whether zoning articles should, the main motion should be the planning board. So that was discussed. There was quite a bit of discussion on the Board of Selectmen. So I gave, you know, my two cents, but it would be useful if they came to us in different, you know, well, Bob was there, maybe not making it necessary that a point, that we are the confirming authority on appointments, that, you know, why do we need to do that that, you know, why do we need to do that, where department.
Check and balances.
Where department heads, I'm just telling you.
Oh, yeah, no.
No, we know you're not.
That was the feeling, you know, department heads, well, like in this case, department heads know better than the town administrator. So I'm not sure that we would have had, like, the confirming authority for the town accountant. They didn't go as far to say depart, if a department head's getting approved, maybe they should still come before us. But there was sentiment that, that isn't necessary that we confirm under the charter. So that was one thing that involved the Board of Selectmen. I just want to tell you what was, you know. And then there was something else that involved the Board of Selectmen besides appointments.
Well, actually, on that point, I don't think I said anything at the Charter meeting, but I agree with that. I didn't have a problem with that then being confirmed by the Selectmen, because frankly.
Oh, no, I said you were just in attendance. That it means.
No, I don't, I don't. But I, you would probably expect me to say differently, but I don't have an issue with that. I mean, there are, believe it or not, you know, some people in this profession who don't make the best choices. They may pick a friend, whatever. So I think that check and balance is good.
It's a nice little ceremony for some folks, too.
That's what my husband said when I, I didn't even think that way.
It's a nice thing. It's like a, here's everybody, you know, it's like.
Like graduation.
Yeah, it's like meeting everybody in town. It's important, I think.
You know what? At one point, they felt like we kind of rubber stamp things. So after I thought about it, I had to leave to bring a friend to another meeting, and I came back and I said, well, the vast majority of the time, it is simply a ceremonial thing. Although it wasn't that way, where we didn't agree with the process that was used for the fire department. So I brought that example up.
But there's been through the years a few times where the Board of Selectmen has nixed an appointment recommendation.
So it was the second set of eyes, how the era of term limits came up. That was on the first line, Board of Selectmen being one of them.
You got to find somebody to.
Well, the thing is, you know, and I mentioned it, somebody had suggested it. You know, we have trouble getting people on committees now, you know. So anyways, but they have another meeting on the 17th, is it? At 6:30 or 6 o'clock.
One thing on the term limits, too, it's like, think about how important the two of you have been to the three of us. I think it's fair to say. It's just, and it's not, there's plenty of fresh perspective, but it creates institution, even just procedural, simple things. It's just, you know, some stuff you just can't look up. It's just process and history.
Term limits is a hot topic nationally now, and that's probably.
I mean, you can always vote no, just don't, you know what I mean? Just vote against the person.
Right.
And then the other thing came up, it always does, whether some of our boards that are elected should be appointed. And then, you know, Board of Health came up again. And then the final thing is there was some discussion about a town administrator having more authority. I guess.
Town manager, basically, right?
Yeah, like, well, it was questioned in terms of us overseeing their day-to-day operations and making sure that they don't feel stifled in presenting their position on something because of fear of repercussions, as the person said in the audience.
That happened once.
And someone brought up something years ago that somebody gave an opinion on, something that the town needed. Now, my comment was, you have to have some oversight, because, you know, who's going to oversee whether the administrator does execute the duties and responsibilities under the charter and in the employment contract, and so it falls on the elected officials. I'm just saying, there was quite a bit of discussion that kind of limiting our role in different things and.
Yeah, you're not going to get away from that. I mean, anywhere the Selectmen appoint the administrator or the manager, I think they were also talking about some additional protection, but that's typically taken care of in the employment contract. You know, that's why people in this business insist on those contracts to have some protection with severance and hearings and so forth, before there's any kind of suspension or dismissal. But I think the Charter Commission expects to possibly have some recommendations if there's a fall town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what they're.
Yeah, but if anybody wants to go to the meeting on the 17th, I forget.
The one thing.
Do you remember it, 6 or 6:30?
I did bring up one suggestion about, just food for thought. I mean, they're not citing anything, and I just wanted them to ruminate over a whole appointment of Town Council, because Town Council represents the town, and if there's a personnel issue, that may or may not involve a town administrator. Who should appoint Town Attorney? Because right now, it's the town administrator, and whether that's a possible conflict of interest in a certain personnel situation. So they're going to look into that.
Yeah, sure. They've gotten quite a bit of feedback from different people.
Good.
My only old business. Okay.
Yeah, nothing.
I don't have any old. No? Jamie?
Anne?
Mary?
No.
Chase?
No.
Okay. Do we still need the executive session?
Um, I don't think so.
No, because we pulled it. Okay, Citizens Forum?
Come on, Dino.
Only if it's nice. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor?
Who seconded?